Okay, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Hats off, please, thank you. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening. We've got two items on the agenda tonight. One is going to be a quick one, so we ask that you just bear with us so we get the first one done, so you can get home, and then followed by the second one, which will be a little left here. Okay, just for the purposes of safety, we do have exits in the back there, and for the purposes of having a good meeting, I ask you all to turn off your cellphones at this point, out of respect for what's going to go on here tonight, so we can hear. So without further ado, we have two regular session items. First one would be the Brewster Corporate Park, looking for an extension for the site plan approval. Second is the commercial campus at Fields Lane, followed by approval of the minutes. So without further ado, I'd like to -- is anybody here for Brewster Corporate Park?
No, we told them they did not need to be here.
Okay. This is an extension, and Ashley, is this their final extension?
This is their third and final extension.
Okay, this is for a project up on Route 22. It's a 90,000 square foot building that has been approved about six, seven years ago now?
It was originally approved in 2016.
Okay, they're asking for a final extension, so I'll make a motion to request for the extension of the site plan approval, and I want to say Brewster Corporate Park. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cypress, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Sorry, it's a roll call.
It is a roll call?
Yes, sorry.
Okay, Mr. King, how do you vote? How do you vote? Yes, okay, Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mr. Armstrong?
Yes.
Cypress?
Yes.
Mr. Rush?
Yes.
Birch votes yes, so passes. Okay, so the extension, Ashley, you getting this from home?
For one year.
Thank you. And then, just for the proper purposes, since we have a lot of people here tonight, after that extension, they have to come back in for a new site plan review?
If they don't pull building permits before the end of the year, they would need to come back for a new approval.
Excuse me, do you want us to wait on the sound?
No.
If you could just bring the microphones closer to your mouth when you talk.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so listen, let me just kind of set up what we're going to be doing here tonight for our second application here. So we're going to have a meeting here that Ashley will start us off by explaining where they are in the process and what's left to be done in terms of review. We still kind of have a long way to go, but this is just one step along this path, okay? And I want to make one thing perfectly clear, that this, there is no public comment tonight. It will only be planning board members. So you will have a say eventually, once we get this more refined and we feel that the town, planning board members have kind of exhausted all the questions, and then we open up to the public at some point, when Ashley will explain the timeline behind it. But before she does that, I just want to make another thing perfectly clear. What you see going on at 312 right now has nothing to do with the applicant. That was pre-planned work by the DOT, okay? So I just want to make sure you're saying, oh, they're starting. They're not. That was DOT work, and it was pre-planned. So I can't explain all what's going on here, but it has nothing to do with this application at this point, because the DOT pre-planned it, okay? And what else? Okay, I'll let Ashley explain right now where we are with this application, what's left to be done, and what agencies we involve, and how everybody gets a say in this. So Ashley, please, our town planner.
Sure. So up front, there's some extra copies of this diagram, but this is a diagram of where we are in the seeker process. So what's happened so far is we had the DEIS that was accepted as complete, that was made public, there was a public hearing. Many of you participated in that public hearing, either by speaking at the meeting or sending letters into the planning board. The public comment period was closed, and since that time, the applicant has gone and prepared a final, a draft final environmental impact statement. And that was submitted to the planning board about three weeks ago, and it's been on the town website, and that's the preliminary draft. So right now, what the planning board and its consultants are doing, we are reviewing the document, we're making recommended edits and changes, we're asking for some additional information, and the applicant will then go back and revise the document based on the directions from the planning board. They will resubmit the document, it will be reviewed again, and once the planning board is satisfied that all of their comments have been sufficiently addressed, that all of the content is there, that the responses to the public comments are in their voice and are adequate, they will accept the document as complete. Once the document is accepted as complete, it will be made available to the public, and the planning board will schedule a public hearing. That public hearing, you will all be allowed to speak, there will be an opportunity for written comments, and once that public hearing is closed, the planning board will issue a statement of findings, or a finding statement, and that is what ends the seeker process. So that just ends the environmental review portion of the process. It doesn't actually end, it doesn't mean that the project's approved at that point. From that point, the project would then go to the town board for a special permit. The town board will have its own public hearing on that process. If the town board grants a special permit, the project will then come back to the planning board for final site plan approval, and there may be another public hearing at that point. So there's still plenty of opportunities for public comment and involvement. So right now, this is just the initial discussion of the initial submission of the final environmental impact statement, which is currently a draft, and we expect the applicant to do a presentation to the planning board, and for the planning board members to ask questions about the draft document.
Okay, before we go to public, any comments from the board? Do they understand what Ashley just described as the process? Okay, good enough, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'd like to have the applicant stand up, and we'll bring the lights for everybody, and he'll walk through what he has to offer as the plan. Thank you. Welcome.
I think it's easier to do it over here, since I can point and talk a little bit about it. My name's Peter Gilpatrick, I'm a real estate advisor to the owners of the property. We'll be this evening. Can you hear? It is on. Can you hear? Does that work?
Hold on, hold on. Let's get it right.
It's on. Can you hear? Okay.
Can everybody hear him?
No.
Okay, that's more important. If you can't hear, let's go. Peter, let's see if we can fix it before we move on, please. Does anybody have any audio visual routines?
Just talk loud.
Peter, then you might have to come to the middle, if it's not working. Are the other ones working over there?
Some work better than do that.
It's working, you just have to hold it down and talk.
Just talk into it? Does that work? Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll start again. My name's Peter Gilpatrick. I'm a real estate advisor to the owners, and with me this evening, I have Kate and Dan from Zaren Steinmetz, our attorney, and Kevin and Rich from JMC, our planner and our engineer. Good evening, planning board, chairman, staff, and residents of Southeast. We're going to talk about the commercial campus at Fields Corners. You'll understand that we've changed the name, and the reason we did so is this project was historically known as the Campus at Fields Corners, and we've changed, through the FEIS process that Ashley spoke about, we've changed the scope of the project, and we've limited it to just the OP3-zoned area, which was the original Campus at Field Corner. So that's the reason for the name change. Our mission is to build a modern warehouse distribution facility in Southeast that will preserve the area's rural character while bringing significant economic benefits to the residents in the form of tax dollars and jobs. The redesign reflects conversations with neighbors and leaders. We actually got two or three months into writing the FEIS, when we sat down and said, let's do something different. So we'll move on. We have an agenda. We're going to touch on these items very quickly, so let's just go on to the next slide. So the redesign. The footprint was consolidated by about 17 percent. As I said, it's consolidated to the OPZ, OP3-zoned area exclusively. There's no proposed development on the RC area. So the OP3 area is about 228 acres out of the 338 acres that are full land owned by the owner. Our zoning, we have no, let me go back. Originally, we were asking for zoning changes on the RC. Today, we are asking for no zoning changes. The use that we propose this evening is consistent with your current zoning. We're not asking for waivers or variances, as the project is currently designed. We've minimized the visual impact, and we've got a series of images for you to take a look at it, but it is significantly reduced in its size and its visual impact, and we've minimized the traffic impact, doing three things. And the first was making the project smaller. We're down about 30 percent in our traffic volumes. We've doubled the capacity, and we'll show you that in a little bit, on 312 between Pugsley and I-84, and we've also eliminated our retail uses in the former proposed project. This is what we had before. You'll remember, it was four buildings, and we were within about a quarter of a mile of Hunter's Glen, and 600 feet from Twin Brook, and here's 312, I-84 is down here, and this building was in the RC zone. So this is RC, and the rest of the property was OP3. And we'll go to the next slide, and this is the newer project. The first thing we did was stay out of RC. So here's 312. That's over 2,000 feet, it's upward sloping. You simply are not going to see the project from this direction. We have now moved to two buildings, consolidated Building B, so we are about a quarter of a mile from each of the two condominium associations. There are a couple houses right here, we're a quarter of a mile from there, and we're also, this is Tilly Foster over here, a quarter of a mile there. So our buffer around this project is a quarter of a mile. Two buildings, this one's 630,000 square feet, and this one's 303,000 square feet. Let's go to the next slide. We say built for Southeast, as it does, it meets your current zoning code, and we've looked at your comprehensive plan extensively, and it's also consistent with that as we read it. 80 percent of the OP3-zone property, once we're done, and I'll show you this again, will be open space. It won't be developed, it won't have impervious surface, it won't have building area. And we are, again, approximately a quarter of a mile from our neighbors. So, and this, again, just shows simply where it is. The other feature of our plan, we are not disturbing over 60 percent of the OP3 property. So again, we're not talking about just down here, this property. So what you see in dark green is overgrown fields, it's natural habitat. It's not going to be disturbed, and we have committed to make most of that a conservancy. But does that mean it won't be developed in the future? So what can be developed up here is simply these two buildings. You would allow, by code, up to about a million and a half square feet there, if it could fit. We're at 900, so we're under 10 percent FAR. Let's go to the next one. In terms of preserving the rural area, rural character and protecting the environment, first thing, and this is one of the comments we got from a lot, can we see this thing at night? So the answer is no, because all of the lights are going to be dark sky compliant, meaning they just shoot down, and they're low. We've lowered them five feet in the parking lots, so that they are virtually invisible, and overnight, they will only be tripped on if something circulates there, so it'll be dark in the evening. There won't be lights on the side of the buildings, as we've heard before, where maybe at Home Depot, you light up the side of the building, it stays that way all night, but if it stays where it is, we're not doing that. We're going to add a lot of landscaping, and it's in our FEIS, but we are also taking, I think it's 50 trees, to each of the condominium communities and allowing them to plant those where they may to provide additional. In terms of noise and air quality, these are comments we got a lot of earlier. We've had a fellow study this and re-study it. My summary is, and these are his words, not mine, you can open your window at night, and you can sleep, there's no noise that's going to come from here that's going to wake you up. And we will, we will further, there can be rooftop equipment and air conditioning if that comes. Those will be baffled down. We don't exceed any codes, and we're actually willing to stipulate below your code levels what the noise emissions might be from those, or noise barriers and the like. Let's go back to the plan one second. Another thing, for this particular condominium community, we're building a berm. A berm is a pile of dirt, landscape, but it's big, it's going to be 12 feet high, right here. We're going to add additional plantings here, so that we're doing everything we can to buffer the residential communities from overfilling. Additionally, in terms of circulation, and this is consistent with what we did last time, all of the truck docks are on the I-84 side. We've further refined the plan, so that only employee parking and employee cars can circulate around them. Also, fire engines, that sort of thing. Trucks stay back here, and they're actually prevented from circling around the project. We've added turnarounds, so the trucks can actually come in and turn around and go back out. We have a turnaround out here for trucks that may wander in, and this is not their right place. They can turn around here and go back out. We're going to talk about, well, it's a good time to talk about it now.
Excuse me, could you just raise your voice?
I will try. I'm blessed with my mother's voice, and it's not, it doesn't always carry, but I will try. So we have a turnaround here.
Again, could you review what you said about the trucks going around?
Okay, so trucks come in either driveway this way, and they stay to this side of the building or this side of the building. They are prevented from going around the building. The other plan, you could actually circulate a truck around the building if it wanted to turn around. In lieu of that, we've put in turnarounds, and if you got closer, you could see circles here, and a circle there, and a circle there. These are where the trucks, and they can be articulated trucks, can go in and turn around and go back out.
Oh, this is internal?
This is not a public comment, please. Let him finish.
It is, it is internal, and then employee parking is on the outside, here and here. And that's accessed with a circular road that comes around to here, and one that comes around to there. There's actually an elevation difference. And then we accommodate the ability to have fire and emergency vehicles. So we do make positive economic benefits. There'll be nearly, or up to, 1,000 new jobs generated on-site, another 200 off-site, and this comes out of a model called INPLAN, which both looks at the direct impacts of a project, but also the indirect impacts, those businesses that interact with, directly with the facility, and also community impacts which are induced, which means some of the people working here are going to go into the local businesses, local stores, and spend money, and become a part of the community. It will generate $30 million in new taxes over its first 15 years. 80 percent of that goes to the school system, that's the way you divide your taxes. 10 percent come to the town, and 10 percent, in round numbers, go to the town. In contrast, the plan that was approved a number of years ago, generated about 150 school kids going to schools, that's a cost of about $30,000 a year. Additionally, the annual economic output, which is, again, generated by the INPLAN model, and includes of direct output, indirect output, and induced output, is $73 million a year. That's new money into the community from this project. Now we have a series of pictures, and I'm not going to describe where all of the vantage points are, because I think you understand them better than I do. But looking over the reservoir, buildings would be right in here, and the reason they're not on top of this particular hill is that one happens to be the tallest ridge line back here, and it's 115 feet taller than the ridge line that's on our property. But there are ghostings, and you'll see them as we go through the slides, right in here, but partially visible from this location all seasons. So these are the, kind of the taglines that describe what you'll see. You'll see leaves on, you'll see leaves off. Next one. Again, this is the leaves off, or a winter picture. The project is back in there. And the next. And again, you can see the ghosting here. That is matched up with the height of the building and the actual elevation of the ground, so you can see where it is. This one won't be visible at all. Next one, please. Again, ducked here. Next one. Okay, this is Hunter's Glen. Here's where the building would be if it were visible and there were no trees, right about there. Now it's leaves on. Next one is leaves off, and again. Might be a little, little visible through the thing. Next one. And again, also staying in Hunter's Glen. This is the area where it would be, leaves on, you don't see it, leaves off, would be up in this area. And remember, that's a quarter of a mile away. Next.
They're shooting.
There's Twin Brook, and that's where it would be from this particular vantage point, down there, so it won't be visible. And if you look the next one, it's leaves off, and there's the ghosted image. Next one. This is Tilly Foster, and again, here's where Building B, the nearest, would be. By eliminating the building that was in the RC, which would have been up here, that was the most prominently visible building in the whole project. And here it is, leaves off, down and down. And again, from Tilly Foster, it's just not visible all seasons. And again, it's a quarter of a mile away. And we do have a website. If you'd like to visit it, it's campusatfieldcorners.com. There are places to make comments, or interested in hearing from me.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple other things you should be aware of, is that all our consultants have not given their reports in, so this is going to be an ongoing kind of review, because we haven't heard from our town engineer, we just received our wetland report. But I just spoke to Ashley, I was talking to Ashley, that this presentation will be put up online tomorrow, so you can, if you want to look at exactly those visuals, and you couldn't really see them clearly, maybe get a better chance to see them once we put them up online. I'm not sure what the timing is, but we plan on putting them up online. And for everybody's sake, you should be aware that this document is online also, okay? So everybody has a chance to review it, and hopefully, like I did, mine's all stained with spaghetti sauce and everything, but I think I kind of read through it. But I just want to start off with a couple comments. First of all, I just want to share with the public that Caramont, once again, it has nothing to do with its application, but Caramont Medical Group has got the approval they're working towards, and I think should be able to start pushing dirt at some point in the next week, to resolve what we believe is the parking problem up there, for an additional 75 spaces that will be on top, behind the building, that will dump out into independent way, okay? That has nothing to do with this application, but you should be aware of what's going on in our community, that that has been approved, and I think we're there in the final stages of getting the documents together to start moving some dirt. So that's separate from that, and once again, I want to repeat that the DOT work that's going on right now has nothing to do with this application at this time, that was pre-planned work, okay? Now, if you just bear with me, I might be just jumping around here, but I think it's important, because I did read it, and I kind of had some good things and some questions I still need answered. First thing, I'll start with your wetlands. It seems that the report that we received from our wetland inspector today kind of indicated that you still have lots of studies to do, so we really can't dive into that subject matter, because of the species issues and things like that have to be studied now through the summer. Is that a correct statement? Oh, let me just make sure. The applicant does not have to answer our questions here tonight, but they do have to answer it in writing, okay? So if he doesn't say anything, that's fine, but I want to be on record of answering the question, and as all board members. But based on my reading of our town wetland, he claims that there's lots of studies left to be done that have to be conducted this season and into the summer, so we can't really comment on the wetland mitigation plan in depth because of some studies. And that is my takeaway from this letter. Ashley, am I kind of on point with that?
There were some seasonal wetland studies that were requested and were not included in the FEIS.
Okay.
That will be important.
That's what I figured, okay. Now, I guess, you know, to me, it's always been about traffic, traffic, traffic. Now, one thing that jumped out at me is that, when I was reading this, that the new plan drastically reduces truck traffic. And I saw the number come almost down, truck traffic only, from, once again, I think where you got off the wrong foot, in my personal opinion, was that you use truck traffic, but it's trips, and the trips have to be divided by two, to really come down to the number of trucks in and out a day. And if I was reading this correctly, you go from around 150 trucks on the old plan to 65 trucks, and double that, trips.
Correct.
Correct, okay. Now, that's just trucks. I didn't get a good handle also on the employment traffic and things like that. You took out the retail component of the property, which reduced it. But I think, and I think Ashley's firm did a fabulous job on kind of distilling, and I call it like the Cliff Notes of this four-inch thing into what needs to be addressed. But to me, I need a chart. I'm a chart guy. I want to see what you proposed, and what this new plan is actually saying, and I want to see the difference in a chart. Your narrative doesn't give a clear picture of the impacts. So on every category along the way here, I think you have to, in my opinion, give us what was proposed, not only with the single-family houses, but the old plan of the larger, and now what the new one is. And I think it would give a clear picture, and kind of, in some ways dumb it down, to have an understanding of how these things are impactful, okay? You are going to do that, thank you, okay. The other issue is more of a legal issue to me, because it kind of comes up in quite a bit here, about how this project fits into our definition of light manufacturing, okay? There's a difference. There's a nuance here, that it falls within, in my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Ashley, under a special permit. We don't have a clean definition of warehousing, correct?
I think it pretty clearly falls under warehousing, under your comprehensive plan, falls within light manufacturing. That's what you're light manufacturing.
That's what, you make that argument in this. I see that, that it does, that it does fall with that.
The zoning code has a definition for warehousing and a definition for light manufacturing. Light manufacturing is a special permit use in the OP3 zoning district, and the way that they've, it's been interpreted by the building inspector based on the memo that was submitted by the applicant, that this project can be considered light manufacturing.
Thank you.
I think it's a point that the zoning inspector has concurred with our interpretation.
We have that in writing?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Back to my traffic thing. You had originally proposed in your DEIS, 510 trips, which divided by two is 250 trucks. Based on the new plan, which is here on page 1-7, your new traffic generation study shows 130 trips, divide that by two, he's saying 65, they're saying basically 65 trucks a day coming through that.
Yeah, that's based on our studies at the Gap and the Matrix facilities, nearby similar facilities.
And part of-
It's adjusted for the square footage of those developments relative to our development.
Right, you say it's almost 200 percent bigger than ours?
Right, the Gap is, yeah.
Okay, okay. And I guess I just didn't pay attention here just now, but you are adding two lanes, correct? From?
Correct, between Pugsley Road and 3 Colle Eastbound Ranch, adding one lane in each direction. Didn't pop up the first time around.
Yes, please show it.
Okay, so, I-84.
Use the mic, please, or stand up in the middle, please. Just stand up in the middle, Peter, that'd be easier. Thank you.
I-84 is over here, Caramont is in here, Pugsley, 312 comes up this way. You'll recall, last time around, we were talking about a roundabout. This will be a T-intersection, Pugsley and 312. From Pugsley up to I-84 will now be, we propose, four lanes, two lanes in each direction, which increases the capacity from here to here, makes it easier to move. The reason you see two drawings here, is these have both been up to DOT, one has a right-turn-only lane, the other has two lanes, one of which is through. Two lanes start here, coming up from Tilly Foster, make six, and then proceed as two lanes through the intersection. The light will be a pressured demand light, which means if there's nobody here, the light is always green to facilitate through traffic. is always green to facilitate through traffic. It's only when something comes down here triggers it, then the light will trigger, will be a short period where the, those vehicles can exit, and it goes back to green. So from here to here, four lanes. We're also doing signal coordination, for lack of a better term, but that's aligning signals to the traffic load. And we also understand that the state has recently appropriated $2 million to better rationalize this intersection. So at the end of the day, you have significant improvements. We're adding probably around 250 to 300 trips at rush hour to this. Right now, there's well over 2,000 trips that go through here at rush hour each day. It's about a 10% increase, doubling the volume from here to here, and then changing the signalization to better enhance the flow.
Peter, also explain what you could be doing towards down at the Prospect Hill Bridge is in play. You could be doing some, a little south of that?
Okay, so Prospect Hill is, that's the one that was closed forever?
Yes, it was.
Okay. So it's now open. And what, what we have to do, and what, what's been expanded is now that it's open, we have to study that. And we have studied that, and that information will go into your, into the-
Okay.
Your, your FEIS once we've delivered it to you.
Okay. Thank you. And then it was a positive, your new plan is actually a positive on the groundwater, is that correct? Is I read it, is less demanding? It's a, because you-
Yes, compared to the residential.
That's, once again, I'd like to see that in a chart.
Yes.
That's a, that's a big issue here, because based on what you, you wrote here, is a big, you know, there's not a drawdown compared to having your houses, so I think you should elaborate on that. Another major concern I had for this project was the input from our town fire department and our EMS people. And based on their, the applicant's reply here, they spoke to Chief DeSantis, and the chief came, they, their takeaway was that it will improve emergency access. It's not, it's not anticipated to place, demands on emergency services. And he said, what else there was, that he didn't, the, the fire department's, Chief DeSantis did not see a problem with the facility from a, but we didn't see anything writing. So I'm requesting a letter from the, not only county, but the town highway depart, I mean, fire department to, to say that was true. Okay? And we'll, we'll visit that once we get it. It was fine with circulation and things like that. You talked about your BIRM. I don't want to go into your marketing report from CBRE, and they kind of show there's a vacancy. I'd like to see that, that's, that was interesting. Another thing I picked up on, which is part of a big project, outside storage. Is there going to be any outside storage at this property? And is it allowed? Because it says very limited need for small outside storage. So is that something we're going to allow, or is that something for discussion?
It's permitted in the zoning district and with the use, but they haven't shown it on the site.
We're not proposing your address to this plan.
In any event, this research generally may have limited needs for small outside storage. I want to address it. If there's a, if you're going to need it, bring it and show us what you're going to do, and that's, we'll figure it out. Okay? One other thing I saw in your calculations, that maybe, you know, the fact that you have a smaller footprint and the impact on the wetlands and things like that, do you really need all that parking? Seems like a lot of parking. I'd like to kind of revisit that because your footprint is encroaching in on a wetland buffer. And if, if you're saying you're conservative figures, do you really need all that parking? So maybe as a way of reducing it? That's a question. I'm, I'm, I'm not, I don't know if you can answer that, I'm not looking for you to answer.
I'll just say tonight that we have shown a portion of the parking to be land bank parking, so if it's not needed, it wouldn't be developed, it wouldn't be made. If it is needed, then, then we'll do it.
Okay. Thank you. Just back to the fire department, there was a comment here in 48-4, 48. The fire department did not express a need for additional equipment. Okay? I want that memorialized. Okay? I guess I was confused and on your, on the response number 4-52B. If you can, if you want, explain, applicant's projects approximately 1,520 trips per day. And so if you have 65, 150, 150 trips of trucks, or 65 trucks, what is the 1,500 on response 4, number 4-52B mean? Okay?
That would include employees.
Sounds like a lot.
So three ships.
We'll provide additional information on that. That would be based on, on up to three ships.
To me, if I do the math of 1,500 trips, that's 760 vehicles.
That's in three different shifts.
I get that. I get that. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood what you, okay? Sorry. Once again, I would, I, I failed to see, but I think we addressed it again earlier, was that a chart of what the, the generation traffic would be based on your old plan that you claim is the residential, what the bigger project would have been, and, and what you're proposing now. Now, my com, I'm referring to comment number 4-140 regarding our town councilwoman, Lynn Eckert, asked about the Barrett Road. Now, this plan for the public purposes, Barrett Road will be needed for the building pad site, so that we need to get paid for that, according to Lynn's comment. And we're going to, we haven't responded, they haven't responded to that yet, but we're, there'll be discussions regarding that, correct? The Barrett Road issue and be mapping it and taking-
There's a discussion we're having.
Yeah, we haven't anything memorialized, but it's something that still needs to be addressed. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Once again, I can't comment on the wetland position because of the need for further studies that will be going on now. Comment number 6-22. The current proposed project result in 48.4 acres of impervious surfaces. The SWIFT had been designed to provide channel protection, overbank collision extreme. So is that a reduction in terms of impervious, the new plan? The, the answer's yes. Right? Okay, so that's a positive. Okay? All right. I'm jumping around here, but 10, 10, the dash four, you use the, it's regarding the, kind of an economic, it's, we're on the tax analysis section. And your general contractor is estimating $45 a square foot to build this be, building. We should get his name, because that sounds awful low. That's from, from my stand. That's my personal opinion on that. Okay? Okay? The other kind of hot topic of the day is, and I, I'd like to ask you to explain it to the board and myself again, and kind of make sure I understand, but a pilot, how is a pilot approved? What are, what's the process behind it? Because your numbers that you are projecting out here over a 10-year period are significant dollars. And I, I want the public and the board, actually, to kind of understand what the process, who votes on it, and, and to tell us what it's all about, if you could.
Sure. So a pilot is a payment in lieu of taxes. It would be, first have to be approved by the town board, it would also have to be approved by the school board, but ultimately, it's approved by the Putnam County IDA. And what it does is it allows the developer to basically ramp up its tax payments over time, so that eventually it'll be paying the full amount of taxes, but it allows the developer to have some tax relief while it's stabilizing the development.
Who votes on it? What's the process behind approvals on that?
So it's being discussed in the FEIS. We've asked for some additional information on how they calculated their anticipated pilot payment. Ultimately, the town board needs to vote on it, the school board needs to vote on it, and then the Putnam County IDA votes on it.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to, one of the things I have to ask Ashley if it's appropriate, I, during this process, before we vote on anything, I'd like to invite our tax assessor to the meeting, in case, during the public forum, in case there's questions. I'd like to get the school board here to understand what, you know, what their feelings are, and because there's some conflicting information, because based on the applicant's tax analysis, they're going to make, they're going to get some good money, but I, I don't know if that's going to reduce our taxes or not. And I want to hear exact, I want to hear from the school board. I want to hear that this project has a net benefit to us, because at the end of the day, it looks like you have $28 million over a 10-year period. That's significant money. And I know that, I know that there's, that people say, listen, what's the benefit of having this come in if we don't see at least a benefit in our taxes at minimum? So I want to hear from the school, who happens to be the largest user of our taxes, how it works. So I want to put them on the spot, and I, hopefully, they'll come and tell us the process, because they can gobble up that million dollars like that. So I just want to say, my intentions hopefully are to have representative of the school board or school to talk to us about the budget. Okay? And I will have our tax assessor kind of explain what she believes are the economic numbers behind this from a town standpoint. Okay? So we'll have that. And I will, I did it, would like to also invite our town, our fire department back to make sure that we're all on the same page here. Okay? Two more pages, if you don't mind. Once again, I referenced the fire department conversation, response number 11-8. Applicants represented had a meeting with the Brewster Fire Chief, Mo DeSantis, on December, on September 18th, 2018, to discuss the DEIS plans. I'm just giving you highlights. And he, once again, had no problem with not only the water source, but also the, the whole development at that point. But I'd like that memorialized somewhere for the town record. Okay? All right. I think I'm on my last page here. Okay. Yes, the fire department on, in response 12-2. There is ample water to address a fire on a site with proposed 303, 700,000 gallon water storage, as discussed. So we do have input from our emergency services people, but I would personally like to get a letter. Onto utilities. I'm, my daytime job is a broker in Westchester County, and I know there's a moratorium on gas from Con Ed. And it's, there's an, response 12-4, that they're going to need to upgrade their services to bring gas to the service, and I just want to know, is that capacity issue the same in Westchester that they have a moratorium, or is there any problems here? You don't have to answer it, but it kind of jumped out at me because of the moratorium with the count down south. That finishes that. I did, and it's a shame on me to get to see it, but our, Tom Fenton, our town engineer, did respond, very technical in nature, I won't get into it now, but it, it's, it will be an evolving situation in terms of getting the right answers and have his concerns addressed. So once again, I think that's, once, we're in the first stage of a couple meetings to make sure that not only what I'm going to say with my board members, and I thank the board members, it's a lot of work to absorb this and to come up with good questions, and you can see the effort they put in tonight is to be rewarding. And then eventually, the ball will be in your court to kind of come back to us with what your thoughts are. But I think the applicant did a very good job in addressing what we believe are initial concerns, and it's not going to make everybody happy, but it's a give and take at this point, and we've still got a way to go. So I'm going to kind of now take a breath and have a glass of water, and I'm going to start with, to my right here, Mr. Jim King will give his comments regarding this project. Thank you.
I don't have any real macro comments. Mine are, mine are small, concerns about the 312 access, and I think that can be dealt with, so no comments.
At this time. Thank you. Mr. Gresh, thank you. How you doing?
Good. I've reviewed the FEIS. I have several questions regarding traffic, taxes, the pilot program, the DOT, and their response. Everything that I wanted to ask questions for tonight, Ashley, Joe, Steve, and Tom have put into their comments, so I'm willing to wait until the applicant responds to their comments.
All right. Thank you. That's fair. Mr. Act.
I too have some comments that I can reserve till later on in the process, but I echo your concerns about visual charts for trips. One thing, just doing basic math in my head, if it's going from 250 to 60 trucks, that's about a 75% decrease. I don't think the proposed building size changed by 75%. So obviously, there's some thought and some judgment that went into that reduction, which I would like to see, because it is a pretty significant decrease from the last time we spoke. And I obviously have the same concerns about, I think it's a great idea to bring this, the school and the assessor in, because it would, I think, make sense to see if we are actually going to realize some type of impact and relief for a project of this nature. So the only other thing I wanted to mention, if it's down the road in future discussions, you can let me know, but if we have ever finalized the hours of operation, or if that's still kind of-
It's in there.
Okay.
It's in there.
I didn't see that part.
So what they've said is that it will be 24 hours a day, but the trucks wouldn't be 24 hours a day, the, the late night shift would be employees restocking, would be a smaller shift.
Okay.
If the applicant wants to address that further.
Come on, you had, I think you stated it well, that the, what we're proposing now would not involve truck traffic, I think between 11:00 AM, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Can everybody hear that?
No.
All right. I apologize. If he's going to say something, I'll have him stand up. Okay?
What he said is that the, the truck traffic would not be after 11:00 PM at night or before 8:00 AM in the morning.
Primarily, I think-
Wait, wait, please.
Six, six.
Sorry, six.
Six. And the idea being, as Ashley said, that those hours would be primarily used by employees who'd arrive by car to restock and do nighttime activities, prepare for the day shift.
And that's something that would be memorialized in the finding statement, the special use permit, and the site plan approval.
And just to jump in here, I believe also you made a commitment not to have any hazardous waste as product that comes into the site, is that correct?
Well, what we said hazardous waste as regulated by the Department of Environmental Conservation, which is what the, I think the town's primary concern is. I mean, we don't want to get, you know, in similar projects we've worked in, you know, obviously, normal consumer products technically contain hazardous waste, nat, nail polish, computers-
The definition is going to be based on what?
DC, which is primarily based on-
The DC definition of hazardous wastes?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Mr., you finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Armstrong.
Okay, some of my questions have already been touched on. My first question was going to be, is, is this a 24-hour-a-day operation? And I guess even though you have, you've limited the hours the trucks can come in, it's still going to be occupied and, and working 24 hours a day with the employees restocking or whatever it is they're doing. Okay. So it is a 24-hour-a-day operation. Secondly, there is, as compared to the previous design proposal and layout, this one requires no zone changes whatsoever. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. The, another question is, has to do with, in your traffic study, have you anticipated where the bulk of the traffic entering and leaving the site will be coming from? Will it be off of I-84? Or is, is it going to be using, to some degree, what we would call local streets, even though they are numbered roads? Have you got any number on that?
Yes, all that information is, is detailed in the FEIS.
Okay. Okay. So it's, it's all in there?
It's all in there.
I didn't see it. Okay, thank you. And-
Mr. Armstrong, there's a separate volume related to the detailed traffic information, and that's where that detail is.
Okay. Thank you. Also, it, it may seem like a, a minor item, but the color of the building does play a role in its, its visibility to the public in general. And I have a favorite building in town that really disappears at night, and I'll give you the name, the name of the building. But I don't know whether you've chosen a color or whether that's still up in the air. And really, that's about what I have. And really, that's about what I have. As of grasses, I've made some other questions.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
All right. Cypress, how you doing?
Good. First off, thank you for your detailed comments. I have a couple of questions, some were kinda process oriented, but you know, one thing that I hear from the public a lot is about an exit off of 84. And I've heard that, that's off the table. Did we ever get like an official thing that it's definitely, I have a question.
I, I can answer, we were at the DOT meeting and it is in, it's in the, the response is that because of, the federal government has restrictions on exits, mileage between exits and this does not qualify for it.
Okay. The pilot program, are they always that 10-year thing that we looked at or as the agencies review it, they can, could be different and, you know, different percentages and different lengths of time?
They can be different and each IDA operates with its own criteria.
Okay. And then just again, process-wise, like for example, Ashley, you had over 100 comments, like, do we expect all of our comments to go to them and get one response back or how much iteration do you see us, us doing here? Like, are they responding to yours and then we're gonna chime back in? How do you see this going?
What I would expect to happen now is that if the applicant has any questions about any of the consultant comments and then they would reach out to the consultants directly, we can clarify any of those comments. There might be some staff level meetings to clarify comments and approach. And then the applicant will submit a revised document, a full revised document that would then be posted on the website again. We'd get another set of formal memos from the consultants. The planning board would then review it at an open meeting and if the, if the document has been sufficiently revised at that time, it would be accepted as complete or there could be another round of revisions.
Okay. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Mr. Rush, how you doing?
Good. Thanks again for your summary and also for yours, Ashley. I have a couple of visual questions because I'm more of a visual person. In the presentation that you did just give and you showed images that were superimposed of where you saw the building, I was actually having a very difficult time understanding what it was I was looking at. And that, that's for me. So I'm not sure if that was intended to make me feel good or bad if I were somebody looking at the project, but I, I don't think it was represented properly to me. I never understood what I was looking at. To Dan's point, the design of the building is not in this yet. I know we're kind of talking about it. I would certainly have a lot of questions about what this building is gonna look like. What does this roof look like? All these other aspects. I did have a question, how do we measure sound from this project?
So they did set up some noise monitoring equipment to establish the baseline and then they modeled what the anticipated noise levels would be at those locations once the project is constructed. And that's based on the traffic, so the vehicle noise as well as the building noise.
And this is based off of our current town sound ordinance?
Well, that's based, that's the threshold for what the impact would be, but the noise modeling is done by acoustic consultant.
Okay. I would be, I would be concerned or at least I'd like to know exactly how that gets enforced, if that was a question. And I had another question based on your hours of operation. Are you flexible at all with your 6 a.m. starting time? If it's 24 hours a day, that means Saturday, Sunday, 6 a.m., is that correct? Do you have to answer right now?
There's a, there's a, I'm sorry. We've engaged a guy who's an expert in these buildings and an expert on their operations. Sunday would have a different set of hours. Saturday mirrors, for the most part, the weekday because that's the day if something breaks during the week, they make up time on Saturday. As a general rule, it wouldn't happen, but that's how, how these buildings want to work.
Okay. And then on the diagram you were showing where the traffic is, I'm just wondering that as you were approaching from, we'll say it called Plant South, and you said that that light will be changing if there were the demand for it. Would you be installing further down the road, I guess more in the Tilly Foster area because you're kinda coming up the hill? Would there be one of those flashing signs like you see on the sawmill that at least lets you know that there's a signal that's going on? Because I think a lot of us would be caught off guard if all of a sudden you were going there and it would. I, I don't know, I'm just thinking about safety primarily.
There are proposals.
Okay. I know that Tom mentioned about the parking. I guess I'm a little concerned about that too. I'm wondering, I understand the trucks need a very heavy base, but the vehicle, vehicular traffic and parking, could any of that be impervious? I'm sorry, curvius pavement? Could we look into that? Is that a possibility?
There's certain guidelines for curvius pavement, very specific guidelines. We did look into that. There may be one small area that we can implement that, but generally, while we looked at it, we could not provide that for, there's a certain amount of cut that you're allowed to do, how much excavation and relative to the groundwater utilization. You cannot do it in fill areas, so based on these variety of things, there will be certain constraints on providing that, but we can definitely.
Yeah, I recognize durability is also a pretty important issue. That, that's it. For, for me for right now, everything else has been mentioned.
Thank you, David. Three more things that popped in my head. While reading through this report, there is a provision that there'll be no accommodations or sleepovers allowed on site. There's no rooms, they don't, they come and they go, there is a waiting area they can freshen up in, but they're not allowed to sleep over. And that area, as you're approaching Pugsley now, that you've seen the honey truck and other things that trucks typically park on, that will be blocked off, so there won't be anybody have the ability to park on the side of the road. So they're gonna come into the site, in theory, do their business, come back out, is my understanding.
Yes, it's actually shown there.
Okay. I know, but it, it was about the sleepover, there's concerns. And then there was an issue here that I also read, I don't know what section it was, but idling. Idling. And I think that's an enforcement issue more than anything and I, I don't know who enforces it other than your plant manager. But I think I'm gonna hear, once the public gets a shot at this, they don't want to hear 40 trucks idling, okay? With the backup sounds and I don't know what that term is, but I can tell you that to me is another hot button issue, okay? But it's an enforcement issue that I, I don't see how the town, you know, we can, you know, help you out other than you have to police it yourself. And if it comes to the point, we're gonna have to send over there. You want to answer that, Dan?
I'll just briefly, you know, as we've detailed in the FEIS, through each of the buildings would have some manager on site, that that would be part of their responsibility would be to enforce things like the anti-idling requirements.
Okay. All right, we just received, I just received tonight a letter regarding Patterson, Town of Patterson Supervisor sent it. Everything I talk about is public information, so you always can look it up, but I'm trying to give you the Cliff Notes here. The Town of Patterson has a problem with potential traffic impacts that people are cutting through on that Pugsley Road. And we have a two-page letter from the town supervisor telling us to take a hard look at it, he wasn't comfortable with it. At tonight's meeting, I received a letter from the applicant, which will be on file with everybody, from the sheriff department, saying that he doesn't agree with, with the method that we're proposing of the high bar. So I just handed it to our town council to review and see what, you know, what our position on that, who rules that decision. I don't know if it's a planning board issue, whatever, but we, just be aware that there's a letter from the Town of Patterson saying they don't want it and take a hard look at it. The sheriff just gave us a letter saying that he would like to read something different. So that's gonna be a just ongoing discussion, I'm not sure where it's gonna do, but town council will help us with that answer at some point, okay? At this point, I, I think there's still a lot to digest. I'll probably have 10 more questions moving forward, but I do want to thank Ashley and our consultants for kinda getting us to this point, it's ongoing. And more importantly, I want to thank Victoria for managing the process. This is one of the biggest projects we've had in this town in over 15, 20 years and, and we want to make sure it's done right. And she's the gatekeeper and she's done an exceptional job trying to make sure everything's out there in the public in the right way. She's scolded me a few times over the last couple of weeks about process and I appreciate it, but we just want to make sure that this is fair on both sides, not only from the applicant's side, but we, we get a good hard look and our next generation's proud of what we do. And I think so far, there's been a good give and take. You might not all be happy, but I think they have some more work to do to prove what some of these questions came out today. And more importantly, I want to make sure our, our school district's accountable here because it seems to be, they're gonna be the beneficiary of this economic boom supposedly with the tax dollars. And I want to hear from them, okay? Because we never seem to see it get a reduction. We all, we get all, we try to invite businesses in and it never seems to be reductions. So I want to hear from them and hopefully they'll respond, okay? So I appreciate you, you paying attention to us tonight. I think we did a pretty good job starting off here. And Ashley, I believe that the ball's back in their court to get back to us and I'm not, I don't have a timeline unless they want to tell us two weeks, three weeks, but it's, the ball's back in their court at this point. So I'm not sure if you want to comment on it?
We have a meeting at 2 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, so once again, thank you so much for being quiet and listening to us and we'll see, look for the next meeting. Thank you very much for coming.